May call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on October 30th, 2025. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8th, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on October 15th, 2025. The Daily Record, the Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per Bylaw 168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our video-on-the-go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have the attendance roll call, please. Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mrs. Delafave?
Here.
Mr. DeBito?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Raya?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Chappell?
Here.
And Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
All right, before we do the student committee reports, I just want to recognize the vice president of the council, Mr. Naglia. And the student committee reports are next. Is she to go on?
For PHHS, the Fall Pep Rally, Homecoming Dance, and Spirit Week, which was a huge success. This year, we had a special edition of the Dunk Tank for our Fall Pep Rally. We had many students and teachers participating during the games. The student-teacher-parent conferences were from October 27th to 29th. Project Graduation Clothing and Shoe Drive was a huge success. We raised $1,023.20 for Project Graduation. We also had our second college fair of the year, which was held on October 21st during Blocks 5 and 6. And today, October 30th, PHHS is hosting Halloween at the Hills from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Each club will be hosting a game, and students can dress up to win prizes and candy. As for athletics, girls volleyball had their senior night on October 23rd against Morris Hills. October 29th, boys soccer had their senior night against Morris Knolls. And there's also a big game against Parsippany High School on November 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Here are the latest happenings at PHHS. We had our school-wide pink-out on October 24th.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
We had our school-wide pink-out on October 24th, and since we're encouraged to, we're pink to support breast cancer awareness. We are currently in our red ribbon week, where students are encouraged to promote healthy, drug-free lifestyles with school-wide announcements every day for this week about drug impact and prevention. We had our first principal-some meeting on October 24th, where grade officers discussed issues and improvements they wanted to see with the school, the principal, and administration. And we mostly discussed NJSLA and Red Hawk Way Days. For future events, student council is discussing a potential Spirit Week to encourage students to participate in school spirits and raise student morale. Our marching band is having competition on Saturday, and will be competing against other bands. And our football team will be having a game on Monday against the Hills. That's all I have for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions for the students? Thank you very much for your report. Okay, we will now go to the committee of the whole for teaching and learning. Dr. Wright?
Very good. So we have, I know, you can't hear the key back down. We have two items on the agenda for the night. First, uh-huh, this works, a review of Board of Education Goal Number One, and then also student assessment presentation.
Dr. Maruni?
How are you?
You're doing very well, and yourself?
Good, thanks. So we did meet Monday night to preview the achievement results, and we talked about goal number one, and we're really grateful for your clarification of the goal, what you, as a board, were looking for in the creation of that goal.
Absolutely. So this goal, which I'll read out for the record, "For the district to achieve an increase in mathematics proficiency for each delineated subgroup as measured by the NJSLA testing by 2029, in conjunction with the administration, TLC will," that's Teaching and Learning Committee, "will identify additional data to inform what specific curricular standards need to be addressed and what specific interventions need to be implemented in order to close achievement gaps among delineated subgroups, establish a structured review of subgroup performance data, and follow up on interventions by April 2026. Establish a rubric by which to measure the efficacy of the present interventions." The purpose of this goal was, kind of came out of a discussion amongst the board, that we felt that we were getting kind of annual reports on student achievement, but that in between that annual report, we often felt like we were kind of losing track and weren't able to really understand how the district was using this data to improve things, whether there were disparities that we were, that we should be concerned about. You know, there are always disparities in numbers, but it can be difficult to understand the meaning of those. And so our goal as a board was to seek more active interaction with the administration to ensure that we were getting enough data to do our oversight role. You know, we commend the, we commend our educators on really working and doing excellent work to maintain our standardized test levels, and this was really about finding ways for the board to feel sufficiently informed.
As we talked about at the meeting, I shared some, some of our intervention plans for a few identified areas based on this presentation you're going to hear. We talked about having our supervisor for oral language at ESL present in the spring and share some of these interventions in detail. And in addition, our math and language art supervisors will do that as well to share how we're deploying our manpower and our time and our funds to assist these students.
And in this previous meeting, we went in-depth into some of these interventions, and it was really remarkable how tailored and how thoughtful so many of these plans were to really kind of getting at the, kind of pulling out from the data and from teacher knowledge of these students, and then to build actionable responses on it. It was really very useful as a board member to be able to see that tracking, that mapping. And thank you, Dr. Maruni, for working with your staff to provide that.
Thank you. At this time, would you like to see the presentation? Would that be appropriate?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So you have two things in front of you. You have a copy of the presentation, and you have this little piece of paper as well, which talks about our plan, how we address the few areas that we found to be concerning. So we will take you through the PowerPoint. The first slide covers the different standardized assessments that are given each school year. We'll be reviewing data from every exam listed up there, with the exception of NJGPA, which we covered at a previous meeting. If I'm going too fast, let me know. I'll be covering things there, and we'll be getting copies to you. Okay? It's a two-pager from the TLC meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Okay. So as I said, these are the standardized assessments that were given to our students this year. This presentation will cover all of them, with the exception of NJGPA, which was covered in an earlier Board of Education meeting. Slide three covers, these are the English Language Arts results from grades three through nine. In red is our district, in gray is the state. You will see that we are comfortably above the state average across the board. That gap narrows the most in ninth grade, and the reason for that is we get hit very hard with students who leave the district entering high school, many of whom are very high-achieving students. So we feel that pinch there with the state assessment scores. But again, we do comfortably better than the state across the board in these English assessments. In mathematics, there's a really obvious bell curve, like a reverse bell curve there. Did, if you noticed that? Again, we are in black, and the state average is in gray. And again, we are firmly above the state average in every grade level. You see a dip in grade eight and, in grade eight and grade seven, and that's when our accelerated math program kicks in, and we start to see students being bumped up a level to Algebra I, sometimes Algebra II. As those students are pulled out from that test, we see that dip in the score. Okay, at the end of the bar graph, you'll see those high-achieving students in Algebra I, and then geometry and Algebra II, who are really exceptional. And consequently, the state average spikes up as well to mirror that acceleration. Okay, now we're going to show you all the cohorts of students. We don't find too much use out of comparing year-by-year test scores because the students are different. But as you know, in the past, Dr. Gigante had identified the cohorts as they come through, removing students if anyone moves out of districts, so that's a really clean group of the same exact students for each test. And we'll take you each one of those with math first, then language arts. Remember, we're looking at anything 4% up or down, we are terribly concerned about. It's a jump, over 4% is wonderful, a dip below four, more than 4% is an area that we're going to really focus on as an academic department. So our current fifth graders on their third and fourth grade tests had a nice upward slope. Our current sixth graders, okay, this should be their third, fourth, and fifth grade years, again, are, made a nice increase, increase, and then have leveled off at 76. Current seventh graders, again, a nice, they're right at 4%, but they're, they're still doing very well, higher than the state average. If I'm going too fast, let me know. Our current eighth graders in English Language Arts, this was, this was a dip we were concerned about, from 78.8% to 65.5%. The state average was 57%. So we're still above it, but this was an area that, as a group, we dug into the test and looked at it. One area that we found to be not where we want to be was informational text, which, which is something that was not surprising. I think a lot of English teachers lean towards fiction. Our push as administrators is to make sure they're addressing nonfiction as well in the classroom. We continued our BSI program in the, in the middle school. We're using data from the beginning, middle, and end of year assessments to look at student growth in a manner that it's standardized for all those students, but it's in-house. We were doing PD, including on literacy practices for at-risk students. We also did our One Book One School program last year, and this should be the second year of that. And this school, this summer is the first time we did the summer book clubs, where we invited in middle and high school students to go over their summer reading with staff members in order to prime them for the school year and get them ready.
I'm sorry, could I just ask a question?
Sure.
On these, like, one of these graphs, if you have the current year, I can't read the, what the, oh, 65.5, should I be finding that on the?
Oh, it'll, it'll be different because it's a specific cohort of students.
I'm sorry.
So this, this, that chart, this chart right here is the entire grade that took the test.
Okay.
The cohorts are the students who've taken it consecutive years in a row.
Okay, so it's not?
It won't be exactly the same.
Gotcha.
Good question.
I have just a follow-up on that. Is that, is it a, like, a specific sample, or is it just everyone we have data on for the whole chunk?
It's everyone who took the same test for those consecutive years. So when we went through it, and then I gotta, I have to thank some important members of our tech department who were wonderful. We were, some students may have taken it three years in a row. As soon as they, they missed the fourth year, they're out of the group entirely. So we can even, if you look, we look at this chart, the numbers each year are different because the cohort's completely different that we're reporting on. Okay? And we also use additional supports that we've used, we purchased through CEIS funds. These include Voyage Math, I'm sorry, include, what is the name of it? An online book resource and an audiobook resource that students can use if they're reluctant readers or struggling readers, so that they can listen to a book as they're reading along as well. Okay? That was our only English area of concern, as you'll see. Current ninth graders continue their trend up from 65 up to 70%. Tenth graders from 55.8 to 63.3. And that's the end of our NJSLA Language Arts cohorts. Okay, but there's one area of concern, that was the, the eighth-grade ELA cohort. We move to math, there's, you're going to see more cohorts because that, it is that more because of the acceleration, but we'll start with the current fifth grade, based on their third and fourth grade scores. And there's a very, very significant jump there for them, which is, which is great. The current sixth grade went from 76 to 81, back down to 78, but within that 4%, so it wasn't terribly concerning for us. Current seventh grade had that, had that dip, that was more, more than 4%. I'm going to tell you the state average, doesn't mean it's not concerning to us, but the state average was 39.8. We went from 76 to 70%. For this group, we've done targeted intervention with small group instruction through our BSI program. We're using additional supports with responsive platforms such as MobiMax, Delta Math, and Voyage Math, different platforms that Mr. McCourt, our math supervisor, has, has purchased. We're continuing to use formative assessments to monitor student progress, the INRS process when necessary. And you won't see this now, but there was a, a 6%, there was an increase of less students who were at the lower end of the spectrum. So while we dipped a little bit, there was more students into that middle group, as opposed, to level three as opposed to one and two versus three and four, four and five, if that makes sense. Okay? So we had a slight dip on four and five, but we had more groups, more students in the level three, which means they're making progress towards competency. The current eighth-grade cohort, which, this is a group that went straight through with no acceleration, math four, five, six, and seven, they're leveled out at 57%. The current ninth-grade cohort, again, this is a student with no acceleration, this is their sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade score, and fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth-grade scores, went from 38.1 to 39.5, which is low, but the state average was 19%. So we're about, have doubled that average. When we get to the Algebra I group, this group crushed it, 100%. Everyone was where they needed to be, really a great group. The current ninth-grade group, which went from five, six, seven to Algebra I in eighth grade, also accelerated. Again, they, all along, they've been 98, 97, and up to 100 last year. The current 10th-grade group, which had, again, this traditional path of sixth, seventh, eighth-grade math and Algebra I in freshman year, leveled out at 32.4%, again, above the state average. The students who were very accelerated and took geometry in eighth grade were at 100%. To no surprise, they've done that the last three years. I'm sorry. And then the current 10th graders, who had, went from math six, math seven, Algebra I to geometry, they actually had a dip from 98.5 to 85.39, which is a big dip. But I'm telling you, I'll tell you right now, there were three sections, I should say five sections, between the two high schools of this class. There were 91 students who took the assessments. Of the 91 students, 18 of them dropped down a level within, after the first marking period, from honors Algebra II, from honors geometry to regular geometry. Realizing that maybe the level wasn't really right for them, they either waved into it or, you know, maybe were pushing themselves a little bit. In this group, though, we did see more growth as well. There were no students in this group who scored a one or a two. So we dipped a little bit in the fours, fives, but everyone else was at three, so they're, they're in a really healthy, healthy level. Again, we're using iXL, Delta Math, Big Ideas Math, other programs to support them. But to be very honest, this group of students isn't any of that. These are really high-achieving kids, and that's not an area of concern for us.
I just want to say, jump in and say, like, that's a great example of how, you know, just looking at the straight data without the context can, can really be misleading because we actually want students to maybe be trying something that maybe is a little hard for them, and also to know if they should be shifting back. But if we just look at that graph, all we see is, oh, there's a big, you know, not a huge, but like, there's a drop here. And so we really appreciate that extra confidence.
We don't ever want to punish students for taking positive risks, right? These are the risks, healthy risks. So when students do, do challenge themselves at a course level, or they, or they appeal something, they move up a level, we try to hold them to one marking period. Sometimes after a week, they're like, I'm out. I'm like, listen, you have to try, you know, it's early, and give it a chance. And after that first marking period, some of those students decide they want to stick with it. Sometimes they drop down, but again, we don't want to punish them for healthy, healthy risks. Okay, and the last group was the group that ended in Algebra II, and they were tremendous. Current 10th graders, Algebra II, right across the board. Next slide covers some of our subgroups, and these are, these are K to nine students, I should say, can I, three to nine students, who took the NJSLA. And you'll see how all of our students did. You'll see the ML students, the ELL students. You'll see the economically disadvantaged students in red ED, a category of IEP and 504 combined, then IEP students and the 504 students. All of these groups had an upward trend, with the exception of our ML students, those students who English is not their, their first language. So it's, it's not surprising, but still, there, you'll, you'll get those last two years, there's a downward trend there. I'm going to show you math as well, and then we'll talk more about some of the things we're doing for our ML students.
Just, just to clear, the color scheme on this one is very, like, blended. I can't tell what's what, really.
Sure. So all of them went up, except for?
I know the red and the yellow, I'm saying with the three, four brown.
Yeah, the only one is that, is that second one, that gray one. And then in 2022, it was at 25%. It's going to go from 25 to 18 to 15 to 8.2.
That's the ML.
The ML.
The ML.
Okay. And for the next slide, in math, it's the same thing. Every other group had a, had a level or an upward trend, except for those ML students who started at 21, jumped up to 31, 25, and then 13.5. Yes?
Just a quick question. You said this was K through nine, or?
It was three through nine.
Three through nine.
Three through nine.
Thank you.
Only the testing grades.
All students.
All students. So it's every, every ML student here. So we do a lot, a lot for our ML students, and this is powered by district funds that we have and our staff, our manpower, and also powered by our Title III program. So there are, there are a number of reasons why ML students have trouble with these assessments, language being, you know, obviously the first thing. But there are instructional gaps from where they may be coming from. You don't know their level of education, what they're bringing to the, to their American school setting, resources that are at home, you know, how, how much their parents speak English, how familiar they are with the educational system. So there are a lot of obstacles for them. We do a lot of programs, like I said, to support them. I'm going to run through 10. Okay? And I apologize if you don't have copies of this, but we'll, we'll get copies, we'll have them emailed to you tomorrow. So early language support through our summer program and our ESL homework club throughout the year. Okay? That's something extra that our ESL students get. We train our teachers on trauma-informed practices, how to conduct class with students who are new to the country and don't speak English. Okay, it's not as, educator's not as easy as you would think it would be. We do differentiated English instruction and train our staff about scaffolding and differentiating in the classroom. And we've done a lot better as a district in scheduling and offering courses that are in content areas for specifically ML students, that we can then push them out of when they're ready to a, to a general ed setting or traditional English setting. We offer adult English classes for parents in the fall and the spring. We had an open house at the, at the media, at the library every year. When it's in public, it's not called the Media Center, it's called the library. We're with, they sign up for library cards, and we, and we get them there as a family to know where that is and how that works. We offer them the same resources that we do for other students as far as different platforms that can help them support and adapt as they learn, including iXL and Vision Math and Learning A to Z. We review access scores, which is a test that we give our ML students as a way to move them out of the program and look at their progress there and place them accordingly as we have different levels of straight-up ESL classes throughout the district. We offer workshops to parents to support and connect them with different things about being a citizen of America, resume writing, what parent-teacher conferences are like, and what they, how they should, what the questions they can ask in those things, and ways they can support their child when they bring homework home and talk about school and what's happening. ESL Homework Club happens one to two times, one to two times a week in every school as well, and we often pair up NHS tutors with ESL kids. We've used mini grants through some really wonderful teachers who put them together to support our ESL programs, such as field trips or programs where high school students are reading to EL, ML families in our school setting. We have a SEAL by Literacy, which a lot of our ML students have advanced to do that alongside their English-speaking friends. And we've had students visit CCM to get them, kind of on that campus, understand what the next level of education looks like. And then we do tons of, center teachers do a ton of professional development in this area, in this arena, to better support their students where English is their second language. Okay? So those two subgroups for math, math and language arts, that one subgroup was concerning, but I rest assured that we're devoting a lot of time and energy to working with those students. Next slide, DLM, Dynamic Learning Maps. These are students that we select, that we, who we feel the regular state assessment is inappropriate for. We can test up to 10% of our total population here. So we've had, you care, 2024 to 2025, numbers are pretty static across the board, and this, you know, difficult assessment for our students, but we really try to, listen, help, help them through and support them through this arduous task. Here's a list of all of our AP courses. The next slide, I'm going to talk about AP scores. So here are the courses that we offer. The most recent ones are found at the bottom, AP African-American Studies, and AP Seminar, and AP Research. Researchers work together for this AP Capstone Program, which is wonderful. It's for juniors and seniors. It's called the AP Course, like, AP Course for All. We really encourage students to take this course, course if they haven't taken an AP class before, and it's really student-driven by interest, where they learn how to really dig in and research and, and create something based on an area of interest for them. So we, we have a lot of AP opportunities in the district. Our AP scores, we're going to compare four different ways, three different ways. We'll compare them to the nation in orange, the state in gray, comparable high schools in, geez, that's a darker orange, right? So, so autumnal, right? And then our school is in green. We continue to be above the nation, above the state in these AP scores. I regret to say that we're slightly below our comparable schools in, in AP scores, but we're, we're close, and these are schools like Mount Olive, Paquonic, and I believe the, the Wayne School District. Okay? So these were students, these were exams receiving score three, four, or five. The next slide is students receiving scores of three, four, or five. So it's, it's a lower number, because now we're talking about students who take multiple exams. We continue to exceed the state in each one and are neck and neck with, with our comparable high schools, AP exams. All right? Our next slide is SAT performance. Again, same comps to nation, state, comparable high schools, and the district. We outperform nation, state, and comparable high schools across the board in all four of these, all four of these categories. Last year, we did not have the national average available. This year, we didn't have that available yet, but you'll see that next year when, when we move on with this. But our students continue to perform well. And the SAT, the ACT is no different. It's usually a smaller group of students who take the ACT, but we are right, where we want to be having some, some growth as compared to last year to this year, the move from a 25 to 26. All right, it's a lot of data, and it's, it's mischief night, but I assure you, that's all legitimate, or goosey night, as, as you may call it. So are there any questions about this, guys, that I could help you with or speak to anything? Either the data or follow-up? Matt?
Yeah, just one about the comparable high schools now, is how big of a, of a number of high schools are you comparing us to? Are they comparable in size? Like, we have two high schools, so it's like, the enrollment of those two individually or together, or?
Sure. There were, there were four, and I have the fourth one written down. Sometimes it's a dual high school district, like Wayne. Mount Olive is a little larger, but they're one school, but I think it's like a socioeconomic, and really, we're basing off of this, the district factory groups from, that don't exist anymore, but we try to maintain with what was existing prior.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Dr. Maruni? All right, thank you, Dr. Maruni.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you so much, guys.
And that concludes our agenda for TLC. And I would just like to remind, doing these committee of, of the whole in a public session is a part of the board's goal to be more transparent and, and to make the work that we're doing available to the public. So thank you.
Okay, so next is correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? All right, unfinished business. Is there any specific unfinished business that anyone else has? I know I usually say that we have not heard anything from the township regarding the pilots, so that is still true. We also have been waiting for the township on the antenna, and we have no news on that either, right?
That's correct. Last we heard, it was, the application was under review by the township's attorney, but we have not had an update since that.
Okay.
President Kogan, I have something.
Sure.
So after our last board meeting, we did talk about, or during our last board meeting, we did talk about having an ad hoc committee meeting. We are in the process of scheduling that. So you guys should, those members should see that meeting go out soon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're up to committee reports. It says Dr. Wright for Teaching and Learning. I'm not sure if we really need to go through that.
I don't think so. Dr. Morene carried us through pretty much exactly what we did in the smaller session as well.
Great. Mr. Barrios?
Good evening. Policy met on October 14th. In attendance are myself, Ms. Chappelle, President Kogan, Ms. Delafave, and we had Superintendent Chase, Dr. Chase, and Ms. Benos. Can I get everybody? Yep. So the committee reviewed the following policies and regulations that's listed on the minutes. Anything that needed to be reviewed by our board attorney was already done so, if needed to be. And the only change or update, which I think was already answered on a board question, was on the pupil discipline code of conduct, regulation 5600. And other than the statutory changes, we also agreed that as far as the table for what the disciplines would be, instead of being attached to the policy, we were going to make it a link. We would make it a link. So if a update had to be made, it could be made timely and didn't have to, didn't have to wait for a policy approval. So other than that, that's my report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Barrios? Okay. Mr. Ray, for Communications?
Yes. Communications Committee met on October 14th. Attending were myself, Ms. Delafave, Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Chappelle, Dr. Chase, and Ms. Benos. We met on establishing a memo called Fiscal Challenges Facing Our Schools, and we submitted it for legal review and also for, for edits among the group. And we've got some edits, and we've also got some disagreements on the edits that we're going to probably have to revisit and, and take up in, in discussion. So we're not going to be able to release the final copy tonight. But now, is this something that we want to discuss now, or in open session, or?
Well, I think the board members need to know that it's coming, because
Well...
we don't want to wait till the next board meeting, I don't think.
Right. So question is, you know, discussing changes in language, should that be done now, or should we?
I think the main concept should be done now.
I mean, we were...
And then maybe the tweaking of the words can be done, you know, by the Communications Committee.
Yeah, I know, I know, Mrs. Chappelle and I, we kind of went back and forth a little bit on some of the language and how it should be incorporated. And, and I'm not sure if we ended up at an agreement on that final language in the, on the Google sheet. Michelle?
I, I don't think we did. I think it's up for discussion.
Okay, so it's up for discussion and, but I think we, we can make it where it's a standalone now, but we want to just incorporate that we have not received a response as of October 30th. But again, if we want to include that language, and I think we should, it's just a question of either adding to it, to supplement it, or, or leave it as is. And then there was one other deletion of, of a line for research and support candidates who prioritize public education.
Mrs. Chappelle, did you want to say something about?
Did we want, did we want to talk about that now? I just, I thought that the document itself should be something that it could stand on its own, rather than having to be updated with timely information. My concern being that it could become stale, and this is something that is relevant, you know, going forward. This isn't something just for up here and now. This is something that people can leverage going forward to make sure that they're aware of the way that they can take action to help in these different topics and retain the updates and status reports for how we're making progress in any of our work, including the negotiations with the township for other forms, whether it is a timely communication like President Kogan does during this meeting, or some other form of communication that we could be putting out there.
I, my only concern now is because the school boards just emailed us today about an open comment period, I think it's really relevant that we get, oh, now my mic's on, that we get the information out while that comment period is open, because this is exactly what it was meant to do, is to give people a way to advocate, and, and now is the time that they can do that statewide.
Okay, so if I could just add to that, or maybe even inquire, I saw your email, and I responded to it, and we have a start on that, because we prepared the, basically we're starting with the, what I read down at Somerville back in January. And we can add to that. And there was a couple of items that are, that we really found, obviously the inflation rate, which was mentioned in the memo, and the other thing too, which is the, you know, skyrocketing healthcare costs, and that there should be a mechanism to deal with that, whether it's at the state level, there should be something. It's basically an unfunded mandate, all of these things. You know, here's the cost, you figure it out. You know, you're stuck with it. And there should be a mechanism in place where we're dealing, where there is mechanism to address those additional costs, which are beyond our control, but we're contracted to.
But I think that that is for our comment period to the state, like our communication to the state. What we're trying to talk about now is what we're going to put in the memo to the public.
Well, I, I think the, the language that we kind of struck out, I think by adding language, something like, as of October 30th, no response has been received from the town. And that basically leaves a standalone, because it is applicable at any time. And then if, you get to November 15th and there's a response, it's, it's still true on October 30th, we had not received a response.
And then would there be in addition to an additional line saying the comment period for the state is now open? Here's the link to make those comments.
I'd be happy to have that kind of a comment. Sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think to add that in there makes total sense.
And, and what, and the timeframe for that? So to Mrs. Chappelle's point, when that time period is over, like, we're not still telling people to go there when it's closed?
Okay. Well, we can, we had talked about a timeframe of having comments from the board provided to me by, say, Tuesday of next week, which would be November 4th, Election Day. But, and I think that's reasonable. Tim, you had a...
Yeah, I, maybe I'm just getting a little confused here, but my understanding, well, first of all, on the paragraph that was, was lined out, or the two lines of it, I'm not really sure why that was the case, because honestly, that's kind of the, if you want to talk about the pilots and the school funding as relates to the development or like that, that's, that's, that's critical information.
I think we consolidated it to one of the bullets. We didn't...
Yeah, but I don't see it here.
We were trying not to make it more than two pages. So
Well...
the second bullet under the pilot thing, I think...
The school district did not receive any revenue from this, from these projects. The second bullet on my sheet.
Right. So which state precipitizes that?
The, the...
Unless the town government...
But I think there should be mention of the status.
Okay, so, okay, I got that. But again, the point is, is that our, the district, our attorney sent this over in July.
Right.
So, I mean, again, we're being accused of sitting on our hands, and all these changes that had been made. This is not to say what's not happening, it is to say what actions this board took. So there, this is out of our control. We took the following action. Here's where we are. No matter what else happens, that's fact.
But the initial impetus for this communication was the parents and the townspeople contacting us, saying, what can we do? What can we as townspeople do?
Right.
And this was the board's response of, this is what you can do. It slips in there what we have done.
No, but...
But it's mainly for them to, how can they address this?
No, but I think having it separate and bolded is important, because, because not everyone in town has been following our, what has been going on, the back and forth for, for two years now on, on the, on the pilots.
Plus, the thing is, is that we're talking about the fiscal, the title of this is Fiscal Challenges Facing Our Schools. So this is the preamble to the call to action. So if I'm a town person, I don't have all this information, then what are you asking me to do? And what are you asking me to do? Okay, fine, great. 2% cap, got it, got it, got it. You know, right now, to be fair, healthcare costs are something that we, we only just started talking about recently.
Right.
But I mean, hell, the pilot stuff and the residential housing's been out there since November 23.
Yep.
So, I mean, we're not making it up. We're getting the emails from our parents saying is, hey, our classroom's up to 27 kids. What are we doing about this? So these, so this is the information, the preamble to the call to action.
Yeah.
It's important information.
It's, it's, I think that, those two, three lines are critical to this.
May I make a suggestion? Another way to look at this is, instead of maintaining those sentences in that section, you could add another section that says, what has the board done? So you're getting in your information, but you're not, you have almost a status section that you could continue to update as things happen.
Yeah, I was going to say, like, a link, a link of source, if we wanted to, like, what has, what has precipitizing Board of Education done so far, even under the pilots? And it could be a living, it could be a link to a living document that can change, because Michelle's point was, if we wanted to stand alone and things change, it might look stagnant. So as of now, or November...
We might not be able to link the actual document.
I'm not, I was just, you know, brainstorming.
That was going to be my question, is what's, was the, the mechanism for distribution of this? Is it going to be a, an email distribution to, to all the parents? So then...
It was going out to the parents.
Those links, then the links would be embedded in there, I would assume.
Or you could do a...
You have it in there, saying, contact your legislator, here's the, there's the link to it.
Yeah, all the links would work.
That's what I'm saying. So that's, that's where that mechanism would be, right?
That's right. That's right. And I like that idea of having a separate link to say, here's what's happened so far, and here's what we tried.
And I do think we have a webpage that's already dedicated to that. So I think maintaining...
Yeah, but it's so outdated, though. That's the problem.
I think maintaining that is the issue, yes.
I mean, right now, that, that, that webpage, that site, honestly, for what it's worth right now, should be taken down, because it has 2020, early 2024 information, which is, at this point in time...
Right, from, based on the demographic study
Right.
that we did, which was a year and a half ago.
Right.
But this is, this is now information that should be there. And we don't need a link for that. This should be in the memo, I think.
That's what I was suggesting. You just add another section header at the bottom of this, that says what the board, or what action the Board of Education has done. And it's right in this document, but it's segregated from, because the, the first page of this is speaking to what the two fiscal challenges facing the schools are, the 2% cap and the pilot. Talking about what the board has done in an attempt to remedy this solution could be its own section. And then you could continue to update it moving forward.
I remember...
I think that's right. I, I like that, because it calls it out separately, rather than co-mingling it with other facts.
Well, yeah, but also remember, I think that the other facts are as critical too, because we are also heading into that, you know, we're into the budget, into the budget process. So again, as has been discussed, you know, there are going to be painful conversations coming up in the future. So what this is also to do is to let our parents and, and the public know exactly what we're, what the headwinds we are facing as a district. So this really shouldn't come, like, again, I don't know where it fits in here, but the healthcare cost. You know, when you're hearing healthcare costs going up 38%, that was on no one's radar. That has to be in here.
Yeah, I think that, I think that could be built into that point one, right?
Yeah.
The rising costs. I think that that definitely is warranted there. But I, and I think that that would then encompass the main things that we need to make people aware of. And then highlighting in a separate section what the board and the district has done so far, and separate section makes it very identifiable, easily identifiable by the community, rather than having to search someplace in the document, right? It calls it out super clear.
And as far as it being, you know, that is important, exactly what you're saying. We could put it at the bottom of the page, so it anchors the first page. The first page is the narrative of what's happening, what the Board of Education has done. The second page is the action that the community can take to help alleviate this, including the survey information that's available on the DOE, on the school board site. That way, you get it in on the front page. You just are, are keep, you're actually bringing more attention to it in doing that.
I'm not sure I followed you on that, but...
Exactly. Exactly. It gets better attention.
What was that, Michelle?
I said, exactly. That way, it gets better attention. It's getting its own separate highlight.
Yeah, like, there's a box at the top that says fiscal challenges. There would be a box, kind of, three quarters of the way down, saying board actions.
I, I don't know, because, because what we've done is, is a response to the issue we have with the pilot projects in number two.
No, but we, all the bullets under the first one are all the things we've already done for the 2% cap. So it's a mix of everything. We've, we've been doing a whole lot.
I agree, but it's not always readily outside of us as a group. It's not always apparent. But I think...
Yeah, so Jack, sorry, Jack, just to be clear, we're not saying to remove it from this document. We're saying to highlight it, so it pops out even more.
But it was highlighted, and everyone noted it very, very substantially, and we all kind of jumped on it.
Well, Mr. Ray, if you look at the box that I drew at the bottom, that box that says what the Board of Education has done, that would actually be shaded blue, like the box on top.
Okay.
And the comments that, not, we're not even on the second page.
Okay. I think that might, that might work.
It actually brings it, it actually highlights it further.
Okay. But let's try and get it on the first page.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, 100%. Yep.
We could play with the margins.
Okay. Oh, and then the other thing, the, are we good with that? Any questions on, on that? Any?
Just to clarify, are we putting the link from our school website for pilots on here, or updating it first and then adding it? Did we come to a conclusion on that, or no?
I, I, I think if it fits, we should include it, but then we've got to make sure that we update that website.
And the ways that this is being distributed?
Well, wait a minute. If we did update it, wouldn't we have to do another demographic study? Or?
No, no, we don't do another demographic study.
If it goes to 28.
Right. I understand, but that was like an estimate, like, and the timing is, has, has changed, and, and the amount of students in that, if you look at that graph, and I haven't looked at it in a while, but I think the number of students that we've taken in so far from the pilots, how many is that? How many students have we taken in from the pilot?
Well, we don't have any students from pilot yet. We have development.
Development. Development.
No pilots.
Right. The new, we would make maybe even a counter for new development students and, you know, update it every week or, you know, every two weeks or whatever.
Okay, and something like that, just thought we can update it and have like current information.
Yeah, we can decide what else we want. Yeah, to be current.
Other information. I think the last we heard was we were probably, the bulk of our new students were coming in from Park.
Correct.
Although we do have dribs and drabs coming in from fifteen-fifteen.
Four.
Four, right. But I mean, that's going, we know that's gonna change. And that's just, that's just gonna happen.
Yeah, and totally partially occupied there and it will increase.
If I may, sorry.
Okay, and then.
No, hold on, Jack. So as far as that, the website data information, the one thing I know has changed is those costs per student.
Yes.
That we've done. That's, I think, more, but obviously very rarely you need to be available to update it as well, obviously. Because those are the increased, I assume.
That chart. Right.
We used to have it back here.
Yeah. And how is this being distributed again? This entire?
School mess.
Just school mess near, okay. And these proposed drafts were asking the public to be sending these on their own?
Yeah, we would, we would include those drafts as part of the entire package.
One, one minor edit on that. You've had our two assemblymen, but you skipped our state senator. I think I mentioned that last time we discussed this. Senator Pinaccio, right?
Well, yes, that's why Mr. Ray is saying, you know, look through this and make sure, you know, anything we want to address, please send it to him so that he can compile it and make sure that it all gets done. So that we don't have to wait till the next meeting to just to check again.
The link goes right to the, the different sites so they can see who they should write.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, and then we received an email. It was this afternoon, I guess, from the New Jersey SBA. And then regarding School Funding Reform Act. And, you know, as I mentioned, we did a, we did a presentation back in January and down in Somerville. There were four different areas across the state that had that. It was pretty well attended. And just as a, something I've said before to reiterate is that many schools, many school districts were having problems that we were starting to have. And this was done before the budget season and, but other, other towns and districts have been having this issue for several years now where they've had to make layoffs in order to comply, you know, just to, to create a balanced budget. And so we're gonna start with that memo that we prepared and then I ask for comments that, that we could then add and incorporate and get out well before the fourteenth, maybe by the, by the end of next week, which would be the eighth, I believe. The seventh, yes. Thank you. So this, okay?
So the goal is, as a board, we will also be submitting comments and concerns and suggestions.
Now, we have as a board prepared a memo. That's what we presented back in January, but we're gonna update it and, but we get input from everyone here on the board and it's basically an update of the existing memo. All right, I think that's it.
Any other communications questions? All right, are there any other liaison reports that we want to go through at this time?
Were we gonna discuss the workshop or no?
Sure, you wanna, yeah.
All right. Start here or go way around because there were six of us there then. If she wants.
I'll go quickly.
If you want to go.
It was my first school board conference and it was, I was informative for myself. I went to some school funding formula breakout sessions, which was just helpful for me to hear from other districts, smaller sizes, bigger sizes, and just in general. And it was just nice to be around other people who have similar issues that we're having here. I'll let everybody, it was long, so.
Yeah, I was very happy to be able to attend it. So I was able to attend a number of sessions, starting with Robert's Rules on Monday. And then a number of sessions on Tuesday. They did a awards program called Ung Sung Superheroes, which cannot unlike our Ung Sung Heroes here in Morris County. And it was very interesting to see some of these people outside of the, outside of the teaching profession that were honored and some of them were in their nineties working as either a lunch, lunch aid or a bus driver or a crossing guard, that kind of thing. So that was very interesting. Another, another sessions about fostering, excuse me, effective strategies and fostering strong relationships from the, from board president to superintendent. A human connection with the age of AI. Ask the architect was with, from our own architects, Pratt Samjin, which was very interesting to listen to them. And also, a friend on Tuesday was building a facility around esports, which I got a little education on that. I didn't know, really know a lot about esports before that. It was very informative. And then on Wednesday, we did a, a, I think it was Ms. Abraham, I was, attended a governance is not a journey, is a journey not a destination by, what was that? What was the name of that district? Oh, darn. Who was to do that governance one? I forget. But who attended it was our new school board rep, Paul. So he attended that and actually we got a chance to chat with him a little bit before that as well. So looking forward to working with him in, in the future. We warned him that we would probably be asking for his help on a number of occasions. And then another, uh, class on what schools get wrong with physical, with physical security. And then the keynote, which was Joe Theismann, the football, Super Bowl, uh, football Hall of Famer, which was very interesting. He's very, very insightful and a very good thing. So all in all, the conference was very well done. I think, I think there was some issues. I think one of the other regional reps, not Paul, mentioned that they're gonna send out a survey to what you thought was, you know, to help with. I know there was a number of classes that I think some of you could not get into because they were full. And I think it's probably they didn't gauge the size of the room that they needed for it. And then, of course, we know about the lunch issues. So other than that, like I said, it was, it was a great week. Thank you.
Absolutely. So I attended a number of panels. And first, I'd like to thank, in general, the, the state and the taxpayers for supporting this really wonderful professional development opportunity. I think going to these events and being able to learn from other school districts, educational professionals and other board members is really valuable in terms of making us a more effective board. And I would also like to especially thank Ms. Benos for handling a lot of our logistics. Show up and there we are. I attended a number of sessions, including ones on budget and the school funding formula, which is even more confusing than I had pre, like I knew it was confusing, had previously learned a bit about it, know more about it now and think it's even more confusing. And the, the complex politics involved are ever more present. Panels on capital improvements and also referenda. Really appreciate the time, both learning and time spent with my colleagues here. Thank you.
Mrs. Abraham?
I was trying to look up the Governance is a Journey exact session. Yes, of course, I usually have something written up as usual. I was really hopeful to have attended the Robert's Rules to Robert's Rules class, which they have every year. But unfortunately, they put it on Monday, which a lot of people are still traveling. So very hopeful that next year they'll put it on the second or third day since it's a really popular and interactive class. And we've spoken about it here many times over the last couple of years. It's really fun to watch them play Jeopardy in a way that teaches you how to be, how to have better board discussions and make decisions using Robert's Rules of Order and their parliamentary procedures. So I think in discussing with Michelle Kennedy, who was the, one of the presenters, she was very receptive to the scheduling suggestions and I really enjoyed connecting with her outside of the class, even though I didn't get to sit in it. We did, of course, enjoy all the, on top of all the regular classes, we had leadership receptions and whatnot, which we enjoyed meeting many, many, many valuable board members and leaders and administrators that have nothing but the best information and advice for all of us board members. And I think that we can continue to learn a lot from all of these valuable members. I also attended a couple of sessions, like Matt said, that we, there were some that we couldn't attend. One of the notable ones that I attended was one called Board President to Superintendent, Fostering Strong Relationships, which I thought was very informative. That was presented by two superintendents from Patterson and Newark who shared their insights. We did have some courses that were at the same time were overlapping on certain days. So that I, I think my suggestion for that is if we could find a way to scan those who couldn't come in so that they have a data point to use for next year, so that they can figure out which rooms would be best. I also attended another one called Stay in Your Lane, The Board's Role in Parental Opt-Out, which was discussing the recent Supreme Court ruling in Mahmood versus Taylor, which was a case that dealt with affirming parents' rights to opt out of conflicting classroom instruction. And we learned about constitutional protections, parental concerns, policy revisions, and had a Q and A. And I think Ms. Mayor was also in that. We also attended one learning lab session, which had to do with STEM and AR and virtual reality on how to build engagement, spark motivation, reimagine learning to improve outcomes. We, of course, attended different receptions, like I mentioned. I did, I will come back to you with some of these documents, especially the Governance is a Journey, because I thought that was extremely helpful in helping us, guide us in our effective boardsmanship and having strong communication, managing our expectations and making good decisions and trying to be as cohesive as possible as a group. One of the more lengthier ones that we attended, I think, was what schools, what most schools get wrong with physical security. That was a superintendent from Palton Lakes and a gentleman named Paul Jenny from Eastern Datacom, who explained what school districts need to increase security while maintaining costs. So they, Palton Lakes was able to use a small referendum to manage their upgrade, their security with access control, visitor management. It was really unbelievable to see. And even just their camera quality in how they're doing this, it was just, just something that I hope that we can achieve here one day. We did, obviously, many of us attended the keynote with Joe Theismann, the NFL Hall of Famer and Super Bowl champ. It was very inspiring, definitely not boring in any way. We were entertained with his stories, gave us advice on how to be prepared for anything in a shifting educational world and shared his game plan for success. Tried to stop as, buy as many vendors as we could between classes and lunch, but as everybody knows, you know, classes. And then, of course, lunch the lines that we had. But I really enjoyed the camaraderie and being together. I know we have a good time and hopefully, you know, trying to hit up some more of these classes. And I will be writing in the survey to ask them to see if we can schedule a little bit better. So, because there were quite a few classes that I did want to go to and I'm hoping to get the, you know, the resources that they provided for that. Of course, last but not least, one of the most important things was which brand of saltwater taffy is best. So I would like to report that Steels is superior to the James brand.
Thanks. Thank you. Mrs. Mayor?
All right. I attended a variety of classes. The first one I went to, because I have the certified board leader's certification, it was talking about developing a mentorship program for other board members, which I thought was a really good idea. Creating an in-district orientation for new board members, I thought was, that was really valuable. We had just talked about that. We do have a program that we have in place. But they reiterated how important that is to give your new board members the best they can get so that they can start off, ease in and have a good idea of what they need to listen to, what they need to do. Allison and I went to see the keynote. Her name was Miri Benari. She is, among other things, an incredible, incredible violinist. She was outrageous. She is the founder of Symphony of Brotherhood. And she believes that music, you know, is very important and that it's, it's, it's good for the students. It can calm them down. It can be a, play a big part in their mental well-being. She was phenomenal. And she goes to schools. She's very happy to go to schools. You know, I was thinking we have our violin, our strings program and oh my gosh, she would be incredible to come here and see our program. I also went to Smart Security for Schools Using AI, Life After, Life After Chapter Four. From Trauma to Transformation, How School Boards Can Lead Healing Center Discipline. Instead of having punishment-centered discipline, it's more to have positive reinforcements. You know, I can buy into that a little bit, but I think at times, you know, that positive reinforcement doesn't really fly. You know, it depends on your, how receptive whoever it is. Stay in Your Lane, Board's Role in Parental Opt-Out, which we had already, you know, we got a lot of information from Kate. And, you know, a parent can opt out for religious reasons and there are, you really, they have full authority to do what they want to do. They can't, I, I know that we had this when our phys ed business came about with the sex ed or whatever you want. And parents were very upset. Yeah, they can opt out of a lesson, but they can't opt out of the whole class. If they find that they don't like that, that lesson, that's fine, but they can't opt out of a whole class. Then there was talk about books that parents might find objectionable. Again, you know, it's, it's more of a religious thing. They can opt out. And How to Detect Weapons in School Using AI, I thought was pretty interesting. That's my report.
I think I was the other person to go and I attended some of the same classes. I definitely attended the keynotes. Unlike them, I took classes on AI and finances. I went to the State Board of Ed presentation. I went to one on communications and referendums. I was glad to see that, that we are, in our bulletin is sending some of the teachers to the AI conferences too, because some of the things that can be done now. And it's so far beyond the, how much the student can use AI or not use AI, or how do you know if they're cheating, into the differentiation of what they're learning and how to make sure that the kids are learning at their own level and how to pinpoint where some of the students are stuck. And I think it's, you know, it's just amazing what some of the programs can do at this point. And I want to thank everybody for attending and it sounds like we got a good mix of classes in with a lot of different information. And I would just remind you all to give Ms. Benos any of the handouts that you got, whether it's PDF version, you know, electronic or paper. I'm gonna hand her the paper stuff I picked up. She has created a folder in our drive so that everybody can see all of the information. Please take a few minutes to go and click through some of the things you didn't go see so that you can, you know, learn about that topic as well. Are there any other liaison reports? Mrs. Chappelle, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that Saturday, we, Mrs. Kogan and I went to the Di Vali celebration. And it was just a wonderful experience. You know, they, they do such a beautiful job. They had students that took us around and gave us information. It was really informative. I mean, the amount of food was beyond anything I have ever seen and they make it all. They, and it's beautiful. It's not just food. It's like a work of art. And they were so appreciative that we were there and they made us feel very welcome. And, you know, this time I remembered to bring socks. The first time I went, I didn't bring socks because I didn't know, you know, to take off your shoes. This time I brought socks. But it was a great experience. There were a lot of people. There are a lot of kids. And like I said, we felt very welcome.
Right. Their theme was unity and it, you know, it was very, it was very informative, very informative. Okay, so now we are up to the approval of minutes for the regular and executive minutes of October ninth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion for the approval? Mrs. Abraham, second, Mrs. Mayor, roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Ms. Delafave?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Chappelle?
Yes.
Ms. Kogan?
Yes.
And now we have the superintendent's bulletin, number six, Dr. Chase.
Thank you, Mrs. Kogan. I want to first make a point to thank the chief of police, who was here the yesterday to meet with me and Mr. Lenahan about some safety matters. You may have received and noticed the communication I sent out about e-bikes. We want our students to be healthy. We want our students to be safe. And we are going to be asking them to dismount the bicycles when they reach campus for the safety of all the students there. And we cannot encourage our students enough to just wear helmets, regardless of what kind of bike you're on. So I wanted to just make a point of that. The second thing I want to do is bring attention to items on the. The second thing I want to do is bring attention to items on the board agenda tonight. I don't know if you had seen, but we have our CUSAC scores that we're officially appointing. For those of you who aren't aware, CUSAC is a state monitoring program that all districts in New Jersey must go through. These scores are excellent scores. I was not here when this work was done, but having gone through the CUSAC process, I think, four other times in other districts, I could tell you that this is a heavy, heavy lift. So I just want to thank the team for all the work that they did. Really excellent scores here. And also, you will see on the agenda that we are, there's a motion for an agreement with the local, I believe it's Local 32. As you know, we have five labor units in the school district here that we work with. So this is the hard work of everybody who negotiated that and the people on the team to come up with an agreement that meets everybody's needs, so very successful there. And finally, tomorrow is Halloween. We're going to have a lot of students outside, weather permitting. I think the forecast is pretty good for tomorrow, so I'll be visiting the schools and seeing some of our students at this time. And I have, tonight, for your approval, I also have superintendent bullet items, numbers one through 43, and addendum items 44 to 62, and read-ins. Thank you.
Are there any questions on the superintendent's bulletin? All right, Secretary's Report?
Just a few highlights in the business section on tonight's bulletin. We have the regular bills list, the August financials, and the comprehensive maintenance plan for your approval tonight.
Are there any questions on the Secretary's Report? All right, I didn't see any new business on the agenda. Mr. DeVito?
Two quick things, Ms. Kogan. So just one, just a reminder, this is our last meeting before Election Day. Election Day is on Tuesday. Encourage everyone to get out there and vote if you haven't done so already. And just one of the minor thing, I meant to bring it up maybe under, well, as a, having my other hat on, as my, as a parent, I was able to attend this week, a number of, this week was student conferences, or parent-teacher conferences, and so I was able to attend a number of them for my two high schoolers, and it was very informative. I think it was, you get a little bit more breadth of what you're, what's going on with your child than back-to-school night, when you're getting maybe six, seven minutes, six or seven minutes per teacher. So it was very informative and very, very well, very well done. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. So now we are up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful, if you would like to address the board, to please come up now and sign in, so you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the town in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to by Law 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Isabella, and I'm in eighth grade at CMS.
My name is Ainsley, and I'm also in eighth grade at CMS.
So I'm on the field hockey team, and so is she. We are both captains, and we have been on the team for three years now, and we wanted to address the topic of our head coach. Over the last three years, our field hockey team has struggled immensely and failed to improve due to the lack of direction and leadership from our coach. Our practices consist of extreme basics with no real input from her. The other captains and I are forced to lead the practices as well as teaching the JV players. Because of the coach's lack of effort, the captains are in charge of figuring out drills and formations to use in our games. Since we have to teach the younger players, we do not have time to practice or improve ourselves. Unfortunately, our coach does not listen to the players or us as captains, and she does not seem to really care about the team or its progress, which is making the team suffer greatly. During our games, our coach rarely coaches and instead acts as a cheerleader on the sidelines rather than giving us directions. Our team consists of 27 players, and there are only 11 players on the field at the time. Even with the extra players, our team never uses substitutes, even when we are playing with one or less players. The varsity players have more experience, but we receive the same amount of time in games as the junior varsity. Next year, I plan on playing at Par High, and so does she, and even though this was our last year for eighth grade, we want to make sure this does not continue so the rest of the girls can get the most help and be most prepared for high school. This will not only help the middle school players, but also affect the high school team, so they do not start far behind. For this reason, we as a team think it's best if CMS has a different field hockey coach for the years to come. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your time. Are there any questions we can help answer?
Thank you. What, we, since this is a public comment period, we let you guys have your time, and then once everybody's spoken, we can, you know, address anything that you said, but you did very well, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hi, my name is Delo Shaw. Sorry, a quick question. Is it correct that I heard that so far there are no students from the pilot? In our schooling system right now?
None of the, well, we can answer it at the end.
Sure. Okay, and one more question. The Park, is that the one on Parsippany Road? Because that one, I think we do get tax benefits from. And maybe at the end as well. And apart from, thank you, Dr. Mahoney, great presentation. My ask for the board is, this is great, our students are doing great. We're the top, one of the top school districts in the state. Can we get a, also a comparison on how we do with the top 150 public district schools within the state? It would be a great measure for us to hit our goals, you know, keep moving up the ladder. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll close the public session. Dr. Chase, do you want to make any comments?
Regarding the comparison data with the other schools in the state of New Jersey, we don't actually get that information. Years and years ago, the school district used to get something that was called a DFG comparison, and those were districts that were combined based on the district factor, myriad points of data were contributing to what determined the DFG that a school district belonged to. We, the state has stopped that at that point, so we're not able to acquire all of that information because it's not available.
Yes, and then after the meeting, will you just touch base with the young ladies?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, girls, I will, I will reach out to you with your concerns. Thank you for coming.
And then regarding the question on the students, right now, we are tracking students from the residential developments.
Right, but fifteen, fifteen is.
Fifteen, fifteen is.
The two and three Campus Drive are, we have a couple from there so far, right?
We have five.
We have five from, yeah.
And fifteen, fifteen. Yes, it was, absolutely.
Yeah, it's a pilot.
It is.
That was sort of, it was pilot.
Right, so I think that answers the questions? Okay.
No, there are students from Pilot, from some of the Pilots. We, but our measurement, we had not necessarily disaggregated, because several of the new developments are, were not pilots, and so the data we've been tracking has both the Pilots that are sending fifteen, fifteen, and two and three Campus Drive, and the other new developments that were not pilots.
Am I only concerned? No, public session's over, but you can talk to us afterwards. Sure. Okay. Public. Now we're going to take our roll call vote on the superintendent bulletin, number six, items number one through 43, with addendums items 44 to 60, and read-ins, oh, with addendum items 44 to 62, and read-ins. Can I have a motion for this? Mr. DeVito, second, Dr. Wright, roll call. Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
On the bills list, I need to recuse on item ID number 10290, yes to everything else.
Ms. Delafave?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Chappelle?
Abstained from 61 and 62, yes to everything else.
Ms. Kogan?
Yes.
Okay, just before we adjourn, I will miss the next meeting, because I will be out of the country, so Mrs. Chappelle will be running the next meeting, I think it's November 13th, just to let you all know. And I think we are, there is no further business, so I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting. Dr. Wright? The second, Mr. Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.